All right, it's six o'clock, December 12th Village Board meeting, we'll call the order, we'll start with the roll call.
Ailsworth.
Here.
Goodman.
Here.
Herbison.
Here.
Hurd.
Here.
Cotts.
Here.
Mattoon.
Here.
Rapp.
Here. No, we got Corum and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four on the agenda, certify open meeting law requirements have been met?
A notice of meeting on the agenda was posted in the three public places and the newspapers were notified.
All right, number five, adopt the agenda. So just need a motion.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Motion to second. The board has a motion. Any comments or questions on the agenda? All in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Right, on to number six, recognition of visitors or citizen input. So if you have anything you'd like to speak to, could be anything on the agenda or anything else, now's the time to do that. And if you could state your name and address too. Thanks, Vern.
Vern Ming, 133 Randall Road, offering, I'd like to, I came to listen on the speed study that interested me in the past, and I'd like to reserve the time to ask any questions at that time, could I?
Yeah, the board can recognize you at that point, too.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
I thought the card was very nice.
Citizen input card.
No, the former card. Yeah, under citizen input.
Yeah, okay.
That was my comment.
Yeah. Yeah, so my name's Tim Rapp, 223 Mill Pond Road. I just gotta take a moment. I didn't, I'm not trying to steal anybody's thunder with little things, but I did grab something else. And it ended up being like, it seemed like more a good lesson learned, too, so if everybody wants to just...
So is that why we got that email?
Oh, yeah. Don't open it quite yet, okay? Don't open, no peeking?
Oh, I can't even peek?
No peeking.
Okay.
I didn't, I was trying to find enough bags.
Okay.
And I didn't have enough tissue paper. Jared, you're not getting one, sorry.
That's right, I gotta come back and get him.
I don't have a bag for you, Jared, so. There you go.
You got the lunch bag. You can use that if you want.
Like I said, it is a sm- match bag.
You should get this bag.
Yeah. Okay, now you can look.
Now we can look?
Oh, okay.
Spamming. Spamming jam?
So, last thing, um, we had some spam emails come across today. Don't forget, check the email address, okay? And this is some Keller Park honey, so. I was gonna bring some of that in, but then I thought, well.
It's time for some spam.
Yes, Wesley?
Under fifty dollars.
Under fifty dollars, yeah.
Under fifty dollars.
And it was, and the honey's free. And I don't think the spam is worth much either.
Aren't you running for office?
If that doesn't. Okay, like I said, I was, I was gonna just hand it out like everybody else, but the spam kinda drove me there. Okay, anybody else? Okay, easy with the spam. Uh, number seven, approval of minutes. I think we just said one, right?
Motion to approve minutes as presented.
Got a motion, is there a?
I'll second it.
Yeah, motion to second. The board has a motion. Any comments or questions on that motion to approve? All right, all in favor of approving minutes, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Call his name. Aye, aye, have it. Okay, on to financial report.
I have a few items highlighted to call your attention to. We received the state shared revenue in November. And of interest, we have the first building permits for the property on Randall Road, which it's kinda nice to see how much of a difference that makes. There was also one in there from Western Dairyland, a very small one in there from Western Dairyland. That is from CNM Properties. We got the police training reimbursement in November. Moving on to the second page, you'll see we did our annual order for the stamped envelopes. We do that once a year, we get better rate that way. They ship it to us for cheaper if we do it in a bulk order. Then there was a repair for the squad, and that was for the Ford Explorer. And Chief Mumford is here if you have questions on that. And those were all the items that I was gonna call your attention to.
Yes, anybody any questions?
When we have the total expenditures and we say where we are on the budget, why is it 155%?
So, so remember we have that 593, we talked about this last month, too, and we talked about it before that. The 593 was the way the auditor said to record that, and because it's not budgeted, it throws the budget for the entire, budget off, the percent for the entire budget off. And that's just when we repay that loan, and this is the way the auditor said to record it.
The reason.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought that was said, too, but it just...
I think maybe a way to look at it is the 593, and then, so you're off 485,000. If you subtract that from the 593, like next month, December, it'll be about 110, you know, the numbers aren't final, right? About like $110,000, full of December. That's just the way it's reported, and whether auditors keep it that way, or what, right?
Yeah, it's, that's their call.
But we are showing the income from that sale in November, is that right?
The, the...
Is that in there, too?
That's not in general.
Not.
It won't hit general fund.
Okay, well.
Because that'll go to the capital project fund. Do you remember the resolution you guys passed when we made that payment, that any funds needed to go back into that account?
Yeah, I was just trying to, when I said 110, just make sure that there wasn't some number that I didn't, you know, these are rough, just high level, you know, well, as the December numbers come mature in January, then ask more questions, I guess, right? Any other questions on the budget comparison?
Motion to approve budget comparison report.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the budget comparison. One last time, any questions or comments? All right, usual do roll call?
Goodman.
Yes.
Herbison.
Yes.
Hurd, yes. Cotts.
Yes.
Mattoon.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Ailsworth.
Yes. Okay, on to number nine on the agenda, approval of the bills.
So I sent you a revised one about an hour ago with the last minute bills on it, and you will note that I put a red N for the new ones, so that it would be easy for you to see which ones were added. A few items to call your attention to. We had a bill from Ayers and Associates for reviewing the CSM. We just don't have that every month, so I'm pointing that out. We paid the clerk treasure bond, that's a yearly expense. There was a TIF Environmental Service, which is for...
Wetland delineation.
Okay, and that's for at the industrial park, yeah. And then they did a door, a new door at the village shop. They did some street signs, you don't see it every month.
Was a new garage door opener, it's not a new door. It was an opener.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, for all of the doors, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that, then that makes sense.
And then there was the yearly law enforcement policy manual for Lexi Cole. And then the Dulce Fountains is half of the cost of the fountain as a down payment when it was ordered. Going on to the next page, again, the stamped envelopes, I was telling you that before, it's our yearly order. And that's all the items I was gonna call your attention to. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ryan about the bills?
Yeah, I'm looking at the ends.
I have one question, if it's on the TIF, is that a periodic thing where we gotta go and read?
No.
Is it because of roads?
We're talking about that road, yep. So we had to do that in, we had to do that before the growing season ended.
Okay, and was there not one there before they expired, or?
They expire, they're only good for five years, three to five years, depending on where you're at if you've started construction. So the original wetland delineation, I'm not sure if that was even in the original scope, because they didn't delineate around the backside of the pond. That same group actually had to come to it for male source, but yeah, but we, we had to buy anyone.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the bills? Okay, I'll just need a motion in a second to approve the bills.
Make a motion to pay bills?
Got a motion in a second. One last time, any other comments or questions? Okay, do roll call both, please.
Herbison.
Yes.
Hurd, yes. Cotts.
Yes.
Mattoon.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Ailsworth.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Okay, uh, number 10, report from the village administrator.
Okay, a couple things, I, I did a train, I attended training this last month on our broadband funding opportunities. It sounds like, I got an email from Ryan, he's been working on this as well. I feel like there's a lot of the same information, but in the, in the training I attended, there's a couple different tiers. There's tier for no broadband at all, there's tier for essentially under-service broadband, if you're under 100 megs, and those are, and then there's everybody above 100 meg. And those are, I guess, the tiers that it looks like they're gonna be trying to allocate funding in. One of the things they encourage us all to do is to go look at our communities. The FCC has now come up with address specific maps, instead of doing exchanges or relative areas. They've got theoretic maps for each individual address, although Wisconsin, the PSC of Wisconsin hasn't yet adopted the address specific, address specific map. The FCC has them. I just went and played around on that map for a little while, and it looks like Astria is claiming 1,000, or one gig.
100 meg to 1,000, yeah.
Yep, well, they're claiming 1,000 for most of, at least what I was looking at, most of Fall Creek. If that's the case, I think we're gonna be very hard pressed to get any federal funding. And I don't know, maybe, maybe Astria's really able to deliver those speeds. One of the things they did talk about in that training was that if you're having speeds overrepresented or from map is inaccurate, that you've got, those are all self-reported data, that there's a challenge on there. You can go onto the FCC's website and type in your address, and you can challenge the speed, or you can challenge the number of services at address specific. So, I, this'll need to be talked about, obviously, on the committee level, as this is worked through. But it does sound like the time deadlines on that might be a little bit tight. I think it was like the 15th of January is when the FCC's hoping to have all those challenges in, and is gonna be taking those and moving from there. But it sounds like committee's working on that currently. Another one of no, is we're gonna get to paint, we, if you go look at the crossing on Wisconsin today, there's two new pretty railroad crossing signs, 200 feet on either side of them, and we're also gonna get to start painting that intersection. We got a safety analysis. I'm trying to remember what they called it, but the...
I remember, crossing review or something.
How long did that take?
Uh, I don't know, I just got the letter on the fifth that said, you guys are missing a sign, and by June 1st you need to have it painted. I called and asked them a few questions on it, and they said, well, it doesn't look like you guys have gates on this either. We're gonna put in a ticket for have this intersection reviewed further, to see if that would be a good use of federal transportation dollars for a gate on this. I said, are we gonna end up paying for that? No, no, if they determine that that's a good use, that this is a, I think it's federal transportation dollars, but it might be railroad slash federal transportation dollars. We do get to pay for the advanced crossing signs that are currently installed, and we'll get to start marking a 20-foot X and RR on either side of it, but that was just lucky us. In general, things have been going well, taxes are now out. We did see, as a product of the equalized value, for instance, the schools milreg didn't change per se, but Fall Creek's portion of that went down. So residents in Fall Creek are seeing a decrease in taxes across the board. We're seeing it from the village, from the county, from the CBTC, the school, if I missed one of them, I'm sorry. But across the board, we're seeing it, and it's gone the other way. We've had years where the amount's been, levy's been the same, and ours has gone up. Comparison, Luddington or Lincoln's, whoever's it is, was getting the benefit of the doubt. But it's nice this year to be on the winning side of taxes going down in Fall Creek. The library is continuing with seasonal appropriate content. Today we have, I don't think it's at 75 kindergarteners in here doing letters to Santa, it's kinda fun. They're also gonna be working as a drop-off location for well sampling. The health department is trying to get accurate well information out to, or farmers, to rural residents, so they're trying to get people to test their water for nitrates and back to, and the library is gonna act as a drop-off location for that. As you see in the police report, we've got our case number and volume from, from this last month. We've got a speed study that we're gonna let Colin, when I'm done here, I'm gonna, we've got that actually on the agenda here for Colin to talk on a little bit, so I'm gonna go over it, but Colin's gonna address that. I don't know if any of you guys remember Chief Olson, but he's passed away. He was, I can't tell you when he was chief here, but apparently he was employed here for a number of years. And then, water, we're, water and sewer, we continue to experience packages, backups on sewer. Just Sunday morning, in front of the Clean Battleiff Station, we were out jetting. Josh and Jamie came in and were pulling a plug line again. We've just been spending a lot of time running that rotor and jetter, trying to make sure that we're keeping, keeping the lines flowing. Root infiltration has been an issue, those guys worked on that, same series of lines, three or four days, month ago, six weeks ago. And it's just, it's, it's an active concern. There's not a lot we can do about it besides keep cleaning and keep working on it short of lining pipes, but, but right now that is something that we are monitoring and aware of. We did send out some newsletters, we sent out a newsletter, and along with this month's billing, we also sent out a letter that just gave a quick explanation of the rate increase. So when people saw the rate increase, they would at least know that it, that it was, when they saw the higher bills, they would know it was for the rate increase. Those went out with all the bills. And I guess that's my report.
That was very well explained, by the way.
Thank you.
I thought the same thing.
Thank you. I just thought we'd be better off to try and put something out in the bill itself, as opposed to having everybody see it. For the, you know, some people were aware, and some people knew it was happening. Some people may or may not have known it was happening, and if you get a bill and it's all of a sudden, you know, $17 higher than what it was, or, you know, whatever, however many, depending on your usage. I thought it'd be better for them to be able to have an explanation coming out, so they would see it and know what, what the history was.
Any questions?
Yeah, with the police department and Colin, is, so with the assist law enforcement, does that mean within Fall Creek, you're assisting like the county, or does that mean you're...
No, that would be outside of our jurisdiction.
Okay.
We're being asked to respond to crashes.
Different location.
Or domestics, or things like that, where they would need a second officer to assist them, when, those would be, those would be...
Okay.
Anything else? The water kits, is that for anybody, residents, wells, or it just part of the...
To be honest, I don't know that answer, but I, I don't know if, I think it's for anybody with wells, but there might be a stipulation as far as where you're at in Oakley County. But honestly, I think it's anybody on well water, from what I understand. The idea is trying to make sure that they're providing accurate help. They're trying to get as many people who don't test their water and have high nitrates or bad dates to be aware of it, and so they can fix their wells.
Very good, man. All right, you guys got anything? And then, number 11, committee reports. Anything from the committee chair, people? Gina, Karen? I just, we'll, we'll be scheduling a meeting, with that meeting popped up for broadband, and there was some information. Ryan's been gathering some information, too, and doing some reading. So we'll at least have a meeting coming up for broadband, so if anybody's interested. That'll be the economic development and meeting, finance personnel committee meeting. Okay, number 12, unfinished business, second reading and possible adoption to repeal ordinance, chapter 254, water, and amend and recreate as title eight, water and sewer. Again, this is the second reading. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this, majority of this is to reformat it with the other chapters we've been reformatting with the title, but also to pull out the PSC sections that we don't wanna duplicate what the PSC is, is providing for guidelines, and get the fees out of our ordinances and into the fee schedule. Did I miss anything?
Yeah, there, that, that's true, that's the majority, but there is a few things we have for definitions in water. There's a few things that we were missing.
Any updates from last reading?
A couple of very minor ones, there was a couple of places where we didn't have sections verified. For instance, 260, or 62 is typically the cities' section. So if you're looking at stuff coming over from other ordinance or other cities, if you see 62, that refers to cities, whereas 61 refers to villages. So there was a couple of places that we scrubbed, 62, until we could confirm that they were in fact ones that applied, because sometimes there's, they say, yeah, this is in cities, but it applies to villages as well. 6216, 6218, those are both water and sewer extensions. So there's a couple of those that got put back in after they were verified that they were applicable to the village. And then there was one spot in the sewer ordinance where it talked about, if the board determined a risk, then the board would have a meeting to determine whether or not the connection could maintain. I changed it to if the village determined there was a risk, thinking that you guys probably didn't wanna hold a meeting to say that so-and-so's got a cross connection, that the village board is still the one that determines whether or not it's allowed or not. I did pull out the board, so if the village determines there's a risk, meaning that theoretically I, or Jamie, or Josh can say, uh, we've got a cross connection, there's a problem, as opposed to having to have a meeting, and then you guys determine. You guys are still the ones that get to determine it, but that, then there was that change as well. Other than that, it's the same as what you saw last month.
Yeah, and we added, in that section, we kinda came initially, when we pulled out the one, the, what part was from Altoona again?
Um, so, what was from Altoona?
The definition stuff, is that mainly what that was?
No, so Altoona, we pulled 8.1.3 mains, extensions.
Okay, that's right.
8.1.4 meters, and 8.1.5, the rest of that is...
Is that the different colored in red, is that the point?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, and I also changed interval on which they're testing. We did get our new PSC tested, or test dates approved last year. So for instance, Karen Hurd's building, it was previously on a two-year, but because it's no longer a barber shop, that doesn't require as high of an intensity for an office versus something where you'd have a higher potential for a cross connection control, barber shops, salons have a higher cross connection control potential. So with the change in use, you're able to do it less often, you have to have an approved test plan. But for instance, that building now is on a 10-year cross connection review per the state. So I, we did update that in the ordinance to say that we would be testing between two and 10 based on our state-approved cross connection control. The bank, I'm trying to think, there was 10 or so of those commercial ones that have a similar...
Inspections. Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the second reading. Impossible adoption to repeal ordinance, chapter 254, water, and amend and recreate as title eight, water and sewer.
Uh, there's a motion in second, the board, board has a motion, motion to accept the second reading here, as written. Any comments or questions? I was just trying to, this 815B, where it talks about assess, what does that mean? Assessment against the property with that cross connection? Did you see it?
Sorry, I gotta pull it up. 815B, you say?
Yeah.
It's, that, that's the ability to compel, so the village action, when the assessment against the property, the owner of this agent fails to comply with the notice of connection, the public works director and the village board may cause the connection to be made at the expense thereof. So this is, we have in ordinance where you're required to connect to the water sewer if it's there. So for instance, was it Kelly Gustavson that had the church law? I might be, Kelly Gustavson had the church law when they put in State Street. The village board assessed, they put in laterals into that law, one too few, as it turns out, but at the time, that's what they said they needed, but they, there was some disagreement about whether or not there needed to be laterals there. The village board put in the laterals and assessed the property for those laterals. The same thing could happen for a house that was, if they put in a new water line in front of your house, your house is currently not on water or sewer, but even if you don't want to go on water or sewer...
They can compel.
The village ordinance says that if you have water and sewer on your block, you can be compelled to take water and sewer. Turns out we have very, very few houses in the village that don't have water and sewer, but that's, that's the teeth that allows us to compel it.
Okay.
It's the, it's a remedy. Same with 814B, same remedy, if the owner doesn't...
Yeah, I guess I'm just asking a little bit, is there, we have other sections in our ordinance to talk about assessments. Is this any duplicate at all?
I don't think so.
Don't think so, okay. I just thought I was talking about deferred assessments in here, too, and other assessments. I just didn't, didn't look at the other ones, I guess, but... Yeah, it's fine, I can wig myself and I'll have to go look. Okay, any other questions? We have the board has a motion. You done? Do roll call both?
Hurd.
Yes.
Cotts.
Yes.
Mattoon.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Ailsworth.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Herbison.
Yes.
Okay, on to new business, State Street traffic speed study. So I think Colin was gonna present it in here, right? Who started with Colin? Do you need anything?
No.
No?
My information is correct, so. All right, so earlier this year, police departments have been made aware of some concerns for speed-related issues in the area of South State Street and Randall Road. related issues in the area of South State Street and Randall Road. Concerns were for speed, uh, vehicles traveling through the area, uh, general safety of the residents, children in the area and such. I am aware that there was a speed study already done by the county sometime back about this concern. So the police department decided to do its own study, not to try to replace the study that was already done by the county, but instead we had kind of a two-pronged thought going into our study. One, to try to do some extra enforcement so that it was a speed problem, we could reduce the amount of speed coming through the area. And two, to kind of track these speeds that we were seeing coming into Fall Creek and leaving Fall Creek on State Street. So our study started October sixth, we concluded it in November twelfth. During that time, officers logged approximately twenty hours of specific enforcement in that area. And what I mean by specific enforcement was stationary radar enforcement. They weren't out taking calls and coming back, they weren't out doing whatever have you and coming back. These officers were sitting in this location specifically to monitor and force speed related issues. Uh, in those twenty hours, uh, officers only logged four traffic stops that were conducted were for a speed violation. And the speeds ranged from five miles an hour over the speed limit to fifteen miles an hour this way. So when you take the twenty hours that was devoted to this speed related enforcement, only four stops were conducted because of speed violations. Now I'm gonna preference that by saying that does not mean that speeding was not occurring in that area, but we do not stop every person that's going one, two, three miles over the speed limit. Vehicles were stopped that were seen by the officers to be in excessive speeds over the speed limit. And those range from five miles to fifteen miles over the speed limit. So we essentially doing the math, we only conducted one traffic stop every five hours that we had an officer sitting in that area monitoring the speed. When you take that number of one violation being stopped within every five hours of an officer patrolling, compared to the state requirement of when a department does a speed grant, which is one speed related stop every forty-five minutes, the numbers are quite different. We're just not seeing the excessive speed in this area when our officers were on patrol. They are specifically monitoring the speed in that area. Uh, we did the speed enforcement at different times of the day. We did it on different days of the week. Uh, they vary depending on which officers were working. We did that on purpose so that way we could see if the issue was during the daytime, if it was nighttime, if it was during school hours, if it was not during school hours. Uh, and all of the different variables we did in there, we just did not see an excessive amount of speeding coming through those areas of town. And that is essentially what we found during the time period that we were doing this. Speed enforcement in that area. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I was just wondering, uh, with that raw data, did, uh, did anything come to mind? Like, uh, Sunday afternoon's the worst day or Saturday morning or?
No, with only four traffic stops and twenty hours of enforcement varied, it's very hard to determine which times were worse or not, just because we didn't see. The level of speeding that would draw concerns.
In other words, all four of them weren't done on Tuesday.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Is it parallel with the speed study that was done years ago?
I have, don't actually have a copy of the speed study, so I couldn't.
Okay.
Um, do you, can you explain the setup a little bit with the tools you had for the speed study?
Absolutely. So what we run is we run stationary radar. Our squads have a radar on the front of the radar and on the back of the radar. So we can catch speeding coming from both directions, both to and away. Uh, our radar has to be in line with vehicles, so we have to be sitting on the roadway to be able to actually catch the speed. We can't be in a parking lot sideways because our radar doesn't angle that way. So officers be parked on the side of the road as far over as they could and catch the speeds in both directions. And that's what our officers did, they monitored both northbound and southbound traffic coming through that area. Like I said. It just, based on all of the information provided by the officers in those areas, we just didn't see an excessive amount of speeding in that area. Now you could take in the variable that it was a marked squad car sitting on the side of the road, but then you could also say it was during nighttime when you can't see the markings on the car for a lot of this enforcement that was happening. There's lots of different variables. This is just the information that we collected.
Do you log the locations the squads are sitting at?
Generally, it's gonna be close to that Randall Road and State Street. We have to be in that kind of intersection. That's where the complaint was, where that speed's dropping down essentially from fifty-five to thirty-five. So we have to be close enough where we can actually catch that reduction in speed or the non-reduction in speed.
On the shoulder.
Yep.
Do you focus on the south and the town, right?
Yep, south and town, yep.
Okay.
So are we gonna do it more clandestine?
If we had different equipment, but if you're looking at a laser unit, which is gonna cost us several thousand dollars. Um, yes, we could, but that would just require additional equipment that we don't have right now.
Does the, sorry, you're, you're meeting. Does the, does the county loan those out?
No, the county doesn't have a laser unit. Not that I'm aware of at least.
With the, with the means and methods you were using. On State or if you come out here on, uh, twelve. In a similar amount of time, what? I guess what I'm just trying to decide is without having a, you know, and doing the exact same twenty hours at the same time, it's hard to compare apples to apples to say, you know, what we're seeing more or less speeding on South State Street than we would see on North State Street or on twelve. Um, I know that in the past, um, we've heard a lot about the speeding transition coming off the hill to one of the big areas of, uh, speed enforcement or speed problems where people coming off the hill on twelve and not reducing in speed as quickly as they ought to.
Correct.
Less so on the other side, but you know, there was some coming in off the other side by the fire station. Is there any way, um, in the data you have? Or from your observations, are we seeing more speeding, less speeding, or similar amounts on State Street to twelve or anywhere else in the village?
I can tell you the majority of our traffic stops are done on Highway twelve. From all my officers, whether it's speeding, whether it's vehicle registration, Highway twelve is where the majority of our violations are occurring, um, and not on the south end of town. Just based on all of the, I, I review every traffic stop, I review every citation that's issued, I review every warning that's issued. And the majority of the traffic related issues do occur on Highway twelve, not on Highway K.
How many folks reported, uh, possible speeding issues?
Uh, we have.
Twelve and, or I mean on Randall.
Uh, two residents.
Has there been any other in on the areas of the?
On State Street?
I mean, any reports saying people are speeding here in this area of the village from other residents?
I think we have one complaint over on the north side.
Okay.
But not that I'm aware of.
Is there? Any tools you like in the future to help with things like this?
Well, I think there are some things that we could definitely look into. I know the idea of speed signs has been approached before. Those generally are good deterrent. They, we can't write citations based off of them, but they are a good tool to have visible so that we can see their speed generally. If they know they're speeding, that sign gets them to reduce their speed. Uh, a laser unit was brought up, that would be something where we could sit a little bit more off the roadway and be able to angle that unit to get the speeds. That's another possibility in the future. Yeah, there are, there are tools out there that we could use, um, to be more discreet. Uh, but with the equipment we have now, this was the best way we could collect the information that we have.
Does sheriffs have radar?
They have radar units in all their squads, yes.
They have that.
It's the same thing, yep, it's radar. Dual stalker is the same exact radar units that we have.
Nobody has the ones that?
Lasers?
Yeah.
Uh, I know the city of Altoona has a laser unit, yes.
Well, that is, you work together with them, just like, hey, you guys, you wanna, you know, work together to try it?
You can always ask.
I don't know, I, what is the possibility there?
Uh, it's an expensive piece of equipment, so we can always ask.
To work together, would they do that?
Potentially. I, I can't say yes or no, I, we haven't addressed the issue with them, so I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Do you feel that that if the squad was hidden, it would make a difference?
I don't believe so. I believe that based on the information that we've seen, because like I said, we, we did this in the dark, we did it in the daylight. And we're just not seeing the excessive speeds that were reported. So I just don't, I don't know if that would really affect our data as much as I would think it would.
Anything else, I only deferred time, Vern, Vern Bed did, the board okay, Vern, do you need any time or any questions or anything?
Okay, um.
Can I ask one more question, please?
Oh, sure.
Uh, just, just, uh, wanted to go down the strap a little bit further. For your equipment, is it, uh? Is it always acquisition or are, is there, are there companies out there that we could rent equipment from? Like the sign, the, the speed sign?
This equipment you can't rent.
Okay.
You have to purchase.
Just wanted to know.
Unless like we borrow, we're able to borrow equipment from another agency. That usually comes with a, yeah, for a short time that we need it back.
Right. Thanks.
Or maybe we want to buy it and start renting it?
No.
I did notice the additional enforcement. And it did serve as a deterrent. And I'm saying, on edge of town, you would expect possibly that an officer would be there. So I think it served as more of a deterrent than you realize. However. I've been there three years. I've been able to observe it a little more than two hundred hours. I do know when the times are, there's the most cars coming down State Street. And I don't know exactly when you did it, but most of what I observed was afternoon. Before four o'clock. I notice that it's between four and six, but it could be at any time. I notice it in the morning. It's the people going straight. That speed study that county did. If you really looked at it, he doesn't have it anymore, but if you really looked at it, it was distorted. It doesn't even make sense because they were monitoring traffic turning off of Randall on the state. Stayed onto Randall. And those people are naturally going under twenty-five miles an hour. So that fifteen percent that they talked about that. It had to be in order to change the speed limit. That's distorted. Those wires that they put in there, they weren't telling you anything. All it was telling you is that there were some people turning the corner off of Randall Road going on State Street and their speed was lower. But how many of them were going faster? Personally, I believe in these deterrent lights that tell you your speed. Some people don't. I would like. Enforcement, if you'd like, I'll do a study based upon site. I know you're not gonna accept my site for speed. In the summer, I would even set out there with a rig or gun if you would have let me and I could have. But there's monitoring, there's monitoring. And I'd let you look into renting from the other organizations or cities. Maybe renting them property for a while. Rather than buying it. To monitor their speeds and tell the time a date that they were doing it. Maybe rent it for a week. I'm sure they appreciate the additional revenue. But I'm just saying, it isn't a figment of my imagination. Done being, trying to do my job to protect individuals. But I will say, somebody told me once there should be a stop sign coming into town. If you don't want to slow down the speed or get them speeders, that's additional revenue too, by the, the more you catch there. But I, I'll tell you when I see the most meters, it's in the morning, when they're going to work and when they're coming home. And if you were there then, I don't know when they were caught, but I'll bet you you'd find more there. So anyway, that's all I'm gonna add, but I'm done fighting it. I did my job as a citizen to make you aware of it. I don't agree with the village administrators. His statement that we'll wait till those houses out there before we, before we approach the county. We have a neighborhood right there that is gonna, it's one lot not full. From a whole house in the neighborhood, that's our neighborhood. It shouldn't be thirty-five miles an hour in that neighborhood and twenty-five in somebody else's. That's what you gotta look at. And you gotta go to the county board and they're the ones that are gonna change it. But it's the village board that's gotta go. He might not have to enforce it if we have a change in the speed limit at the village limit, thirty-five. We might not have to enforce it as much if there's a stop sign on Randall Road coming south. And going, or going north and going south. See if they'll do that, at least try. I'm not, I'm done. If somebody, if someone gets hurt and I was told that that's a busy walker. It's under your study for bike trail, isn't it? The trails in the village? That it's a well-used walking street, Randall Road? I've seen some very bad situations with children on bikes. I've seen adults not look. Maybe it's just me sitting there too long. I won't sit there anymore. I'll close the windshield, of course, close the window, but it's very evident. There was a village board member that was at my house and he saw one of those cars go through like that. I see that all the time, it didn't even flinch me anymore, it's just the way they do it. But I disagree with. Analysis of it by that study that the county did. Don't waste your money on it unless they can figure out a way to get that traffic north and south. Don't ever do a traffic study the way they do it because it's distorted.
Where do they put the wire? I remember where they put the wire.
They put the wire about two hundred feet, three hundred feet, south on K. And they put it about three hundred feet north on K.
Into town? Of, of Randall?
From Randall Road, three hundred feet south of Randall, three hundred feet north.
I might be incorrect, but I think the reason we can't have a stop sign there is because it is a county road. They have to do it.
Well, you gotta approach the county, but it's in the village limits. You guys gotta stand up for your village rights. The county board shouldn't be telling us what we do with our village.
It's just not the way state code says it. We don't, we don't, if we're not the ones, we're not the local jurisdictional authority over it. And I know we've been over this conversation.
Let's get the county to enforce it. If they're gonna not listen to the people of residence in the neighborhood, then let's get the county people to enforce those speeds. That's all I'm asking, rather than sitting on the watercolor hill. Sitting up by the water tower. I think that's a, that's county officers that I think should be using their time on State Street, which the county controls. That's what you gotta do. Pursue it, try it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks Vern. Anybody get the board okay with Jamie's speed? Okay?
So I'll, I'll, I'll touch on that a little bit. From my understanding of the speed study, they put two wires north of the intersection or two air, air tubes there. Two south of it. So as the vehicle crosses, it's a measured amount that they're crossing, that's how they base the speed off of it. By the time it travels those two lines. And then that information also correlates between the two machines. So from my understanding, um, so a machine, so it knows that this, you know, a vehicle crossed this one and if they have a mark on, six seconds later on this one, that prob- the probability of it being the same vehicle going through the intersection is, is higher. And I might be totally wrong, that's my, my explanation, what I've been explaining about that. So the, you're not wrong with people turning, turning from Randall Road onto that, but those things are made to calculate that, that possibility as well. So if, if the vehicle's hitting all four tubes in a certain amount of time, that would be, that would know that the vehicle's traveling straight. If it only hits two of the tubes, then they know that, you know, north or south, that's the vehicle turned. So, and I'm not saying you're, you're wrong either Vern, but. There's be, I, Josh and I are on the streets all day, every day out in town here, everybody's speeding all over town. So I don't know that, it's not, your transition there is, is bad because people come hauling ass in. Sorry. People come flying in, um, and, and there is more speeding there in the transitional zones, yeah. They're speeding all over town too, so. You know, not that you're wrong, but I mean, it's a problem all over town, you can, you know. If you get on the speed study in this instance, you guys put some, uh, time into it too and. You know, not that there's not a problem, but I don't know much more time that you guys want to spend on this. It's just a, an unfortunate, uh, nature of the beast, uh, when there's vehicles involved, so. And, uh, not only that, but there's the data for crashes and, uh, any sort of injuries, that sort of stuff is extremely low in town too. Again, not saying there's not speeders, but the instance of, of, uh, things happening because of speeding are basically not. Again, not saying there's not speeders, but the instance of, of things happening because of speeding are basically null. I've been on the fire department for twenty-nine years, we've had maybe three or four crashes in town. I don't know if they were speed-related either, so, just my two cents, but.
Okay, thanks Jamie.
Is it likely that with the development and the increase in streets, you know, like entrances off of K and Randall, that the county would just naturally put one, put a stop sign there at the intersection?
I don't know about a stop sign, but the basis of that speed study. So when the county did their speed study, and I know that there's some disagreement about how that does or doesn't work, but they follow a fairly strict standard, there's an engineering standard for how you determine speed limits on roads of different classes, based on travel volume, based on number of cars coming in. Vern's writing, talking about neighborhoods, you know, how they classify the neighborhoods, how many driveways are hitting that street affected, how many, what the prevailing speed. There's, there's a whole bunch of things that go into it. But as you see development creep further south, that will change where that transition zone is. There still will have to be a transition zone. When you're, when you're on the south end of, you know, coming up K, it's fifty-five miles an hour. At some point, it has to go from fifty-five to thirty-five, or you know, whatever that transition is to get to twenty-five. As that development creeps, that transition zone is going to change, and it will no longer be visible, as readily available on the intersection of Randall Road, but that transition zone still is going to be readily accessible to a new south end. It will no longer be necessarily in front of Vern's window, but we still will see a transition zone, just like we see coming off the hill. And this is where we've talked about this in the past, about trying to enforce the speed limit. Because in and of itself, if they were, if everybody had slowed down, if they were following the speed limit, if they were doing thirty-five in front of Vern's, and then, you know, they get to the other side and they're transitioning to twenty-five, if everybody was driving the speed limit, the speed limit in and of itself isn't excessive, I don't think. I mean, maybe somebody else disagrees, you know, there's.
Well, fifteen over is a little excessive.
No, I, I mean the speed limit itself, thirty-five miles an hour.
It's not excessive, nope.
So my, my point is that when Vern talks about enforcement and deterrent, I, I think that's a really good point. There's always gonna be somebody on transition. If Randall develops more, the county redoes their study, it's gonna move that transition further south, but there's always going to be a transition zone. When you slow, people slow down, people don't slow down as fast as they can. So those things we talk about with deterrence, whether it's more enforcement, more visible enforcement, whether it's flashing signs, you know, we talked about those signs you put on a post that we could move around, that we could move it from one area of town to the other. There's the trailers, I mean, I, I know we, we talked about that two years ago now, maybe a year ago, I don't remember.
It was a couple of years ago.
We've talked about that in the past, and there was some, we, we didn't wanna do it at the time. I'm not saying we're not gonna wanna do it again at some point in the future. But I think maybe some of those other strategies, we can, we can talk about whether the county's speed study works or doesn't work, but honestly, we don't have any control over that. It's the county-run road, the county gets, they're the maintaining authority over it, they get to set the speed limits on it. They get to determine where the signs are, they're, they're running the study. However, we can do things, you know, if we wanna, we can enforce the heck out of it. We can come in and put in speed signs, we can do, I mean, I drive through Augusta, they don't have it up there real regular. I don't know if they borrow it, I don't know if they own it, but every once in a while, you'll see the, this is your speed sign coming into Augusta. It slows people down, I mean, when people know what the speed limit is, and it flashes at them if they're going five miles an hour over, or whatever they set it at. That, I mean, there might be other things we can do to help address it down there without, within, within our envelope, within things that we can do.
I have a question, why, well, what would be a reason or disadvantage to not change the transition right now or request it? Because I don't think you need a speed study for that, because if I recall right, it's like if they said, across from Keller, you could reduce Keller to fifteen miles an hour because there's a park there. And they say, well, that's too slow, and they said, well, if the houses are within two, two hundred feet in frequency, that, you know, there's so many of them in a block, then you don't have to do a speed study, you just request it to change.
Well, and we can request it, I do think that perhaps, and I know, I know it wasn't popular with a resident, but if you're trying to push that speed, if you're trying to push that transition zone as far back as possible, those new houses will affect that transition zone. We do have foundations, and maybe they'll take that into consideration that, you know, there are.
Right, but then you just request it again.
There's another mechanical piece to this puzzle. Because empirically, most drivers, most drivers, when they enter a residential area, they have a tendency to pull off the foot. They have a tendency to coast, start reducing speed. By next spring, by middle of next spring, there can be houses out there. Now, they might not have.
My question is, why not, but not, why is the argument with them, why don't they just, why do they care? Why wouldn't they, why, why is the battle to lower speed?
My two cents, well, because as much as the residents here want it to be a lower speed limit, people traveling through town want it to be a higher speed limit. So you get people that are coming through, they're going, oh my goodness, why do they slam this speed limit down to twenty-five miles an hour, I've gotta drive it twenty-five miles an hour for two miles before I get into town? And there's a, there, there's a competition, we're trying to efficiently move traffic through an area, and we still need to protect the residents in there, and there's a, there's a balance that has to be struck.
Right, but if, if the guideline is houses certain distance apart, and then you change it to twenty-five?
I guess, I guess this was gonna be my, my thought process. We do have a development that's started, where we have not yet plotted it, but we do have some foundations on the ground. I believe since the last time that was done, we now have two new houses on the block since that happened. That might put us within the threshold on that. I can make a few phone calls and see what the, the threshold is or the concern is from the county about that.
And the daycare to that too.
Yeah.
I mean, I was talking about parents leaving and coming.
Right, but the daycare, the daycare was there before, so when I, when I go to approach this to the county, you know, when I, when I talk to my counterpart at the county, the thought, I guess my thought process is, here's the things that we see that are different today than they were four years ago. With that information in mind, would this, would this typically, would this typically warrant a change in that transition zone? And if it's amenable, then let's go ahead and formally request it. If we think there's some pushback to it, let's see where the pushback is and see if that's something that we can address in our request. If you know, if you know where the pressure points are, if you know, hey, yeah, we want, that sounds great, that seems like a, you, you meet the threshold, that's not gonna be a problem, then let's request it that way. If we look at it and there's pushback, then let's see what that pushback is and discuss it with that in mind, as opposed to talking about hypotheticals we don't necessarily know.
I'd rather have the leverage.
Yeah, well, I don't, yeah, I don't think you, you necessarily need, but I'll make a motion where Jared did contact the county and get some more information on what.
Second?
Go ahead.
Related to State Street and what other parameters, you know, kinda kicks off. And maybe the, the frequency of, like, if you do it now, is there a timeline, they don't wanna hear from you again in that area? What, what, what do they prefer, what are they looking for? Does that make sense?
Yep.
And I would start with our county rep, because that would be right up his alley to do that.
I'm gonna start with the road commissioner, and then we'll start with the county, then we'll go to the county rep, but I'm gonna start with the road commissioner and see what his first answer is, and then we'll go talk to his boss.
Okay, and I think there was a second.
Ryan Beattie.
Any comments or questions on that? Uh, oh, we got a couple of board, okay, a couple hearing from a couple people.
I just had a quick question, has anybody ever looked into constructing turnarounds in, in the village here? I know.
Roundabouts?
Roundabouts, thank you.
Oh, roundabouts.
I know Minnesota's, small towns, they're very common.
Yeah.
I think that would be a county thing again, because it's two, two county roads in at least that, that intersection, but, yeah, I don't know. I don't think we've looked at it like we, the village has enough space. Anything, it's either state or county roads, I think we're, would make sense to have those around here.
True.
But.
It's a good thought.
Can I ask, yeah, Wesley?
Um, I'd just like to speak a little bit and give a little bit more credence to Mr. Ming's anecdotal evidence. I appreciate the work that our officers have done, and it's quite, twenty hours is quite a bit of time for our police department to provide to do such a study. But in the long term of it, it's a very small statistical sample, sample, it's less than an hour a day over a period of a month. Whereas Mr. Ming lives this, this is his house, I assume you're a retired Mr. Ming?
Yes.
So he lives it almost twenty-four seven, aside from the times when he's not in his house, but he's seen a lot more than, you know, officers can in less than an hour a day. I think it would be worth it for us to do some sort of larger study ourselves, possibly getting some sort of ice maybe from Altoona or something, or some other entity that could actually have a machine sitting out there and recording it for twenty-four hours a day over a period of a month. And that would get us actual big statistical data. I think it would be worth it, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks Wesley.
Thank you.
Okay, the board has a motion, any other comments, questions? All right, all in favor of the motion? Does anybody need to repeat it, or we're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Good, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
On the opposed name. All right, nice to have it. Uh, committee recommendations, do you have anything? Possible assignment to committees blank, and, Roger?